So with that, I believe we're all in attendance for members of council and I'll call the meeting door. Begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Adam clerk, the meeting is yours.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of community interests. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the corporation of the city of Stratford dated April twenty fifth be adopted as printed.
Moved by councillor Bunting and seconded by councillor Ritzma that the minutes from the April twenty fifth be adopted. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried.
Item four is adoption of the addendum and there's no addendum to be adopted. So moving to item five, report of the committee of the whole in camera session. Item five point one at the April twenty fifth session under the municipal act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. And that was item four point one, appointment of a director to the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation. And that was considered under the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees exemption. And there is a recommendation that Lori Radke be appointed as a director to the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation Board of Directors. As the new member of the public representative for a three year term to June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. With an option to extend for an additional three year term or until a successor is appointed by council.
By councillor Gavney, second by councillor Clifford. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried.
Item five point two, just prior to today's council meeting, an in camera session was held under the following items. Now is item four point one, insurance claim update under the security of the property of the municipality or local board. And advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose exemption. And then item four point two was an update development for future city owned industrial land. And that was under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality. Including municipal property leased for more than twenty one years and a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on. By or on behalf of the municipality and at the in camera session, direction was given on both matters.
Thank you.
Moving to item six hearings of deputations and presentations, there are none scheduled. So I mean to item seven orders of the day, item seven point one is a proclamation. And there is a motion that city council hereby proclaims October seventh, two thousand and twenty two as international trigeminal neuralgia day in the city of Stratford. To bring awareness to those who suffer from trigeminal neuralgia and facial pain disorders.
Move for that councillor Ingram, seconder. Thank you councillor Ritzma. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried.
Item seven point two is correspondence and it's called for nominations. So members of council wishing to put forward their nominations must complete the nomination form and obtain a council resolution of support. Nomination forms and supporting material must be submitted to the association by twelve noon. On Monday, June twenty seventh, and there is a draft motion on the agenda for your consideration.
Is any member of council wishing to stand? All right. Seeing none, well then go on to item seven point three.
Item seven point three is a resolution regarding cult consulting services for the sanitary master plan and there is a staff recommendation. That the request for proposal RFP twenty twenty two dash twelve for the sanitary master plan consulting services be awarded. To Civica Infrastructure, Inc. At a total proposal price of two hundred and fifty six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty one cents, including H O T. And that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be in the same are authorized sign the contract agreement.
Thank you councillor Gaffney, councillor BD moving in second in discussion. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried.
Item seven point four is a resolution regarding part lot control. And there is a staff recommendation that council approved part lot control application P L C O one dash twenty two. To exempt block one twenty seven register plan on forty four M dash seventy five from part lot control for one year. From the date of the passing of the bylaw to create the parts shown on reference plan forty four R dash five nine seven eight. For the purpose of creating seventeen parcels of land.
Thank you mover councillor Ingram, second or councillor discussion. Not all in favor? Opposed to any? Let's carry.
Item seven point five is a resolution for a special occasion permit. The Stratford Minor Baseball Association is hosting their S M B A Hitman Slow Pitch Tournament on July fifteenth to seventeenth at the Packham Road Sports Complex. And the organizer has applied for a special occasion permit liquor license. Comments received are noted on the agenda. And there is a motion that city council does not express concern with the issuance of a special occasion permit for the S M B A Hitman Slow Pitch Tournament. At the Packham Road Sports Complex, subject to the necessary permits being obtained, compliance with the city's municipal alcohol risk policy. And the required certificates of insurance being provided.
Mover. Councillor Henderson, second by councillor Bunting, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried.
Item seven point six is a resolution regarding the Alfresco Outdoor Public Dining Program. And there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Alfresco Outdoor Public Dining Program be received. And that, and then there are a number of numbered motions as listed on your agenda.
So which one you move and second by councillor Gaff, discussion councillor Ingram.
Um, I have a question and then I might have a couple of questions and then a comment. My first question is the installation of seventeen picnic tables into Market Square as non movable fixtures. Um, does this work with the layout for the Stratford Sunday Market?
Through your worship, yes, it does. I've worked with the organization for the market and they've taken into consideration the plans for the tables.
Perfect. And is that more tables than there were last year or is this the same number?
It's actually less tables than last year.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my next comments relate to. Well, I guess number six and number nine, which is council approves the installation of the seventeen picnic tables as non movable fixtures. And then number nine is that council authorizes from this point forward staff to respond to any city of supported operational amendments to the program at the discretion of the Director of Community Services. Um, the, the reason I'm bringing those two up is that the, the B I A has not been. Involved or consulted, had no idea this was coming forward. At all. And given the comments on the patio program that they, they weren't aware with sufficient time. To be involved or comment or be included at all. I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned regarding the, the communication and the working relationships. That should involve the B I A and seemingly haven't. So I'm wondering, you know, if, if any sort of operational amendments to the program are going to go through the discussion of the director, how do we include the B I A? And if the B I A is planning any events for Market Square, how does that affect the seventeen picnic tables that are nonmovable fixtures? Because the intent behind Market Square when we first installed it was that we could have these big community events there. And it would be an open space that would be flexible. And if we're having these picnic tables that are nonmovable fixtures, how do we still? Retain that original intent. So a couple, couple of comments and questions in there.
Maybe I can start through the mayor. The positioning of the nonmovable tables is on the perimeter. That will allow the events coordinator to still book events in Market Square. And the idea of what we find the nonmovable is that they're extremely heavy. And, and the more we move them, the less time that they will last. So the design is to perimeter of position them so that events can be still happen in Market Square. And to your second question and number nine, I believe we could add to the motion if so desired that the director community services in consultation with the B I A.
You move that as an amendment councillor.
I will, yes, please. Thank you.
Second or be councillor Ritzma? All right. Anything further councillor seven?
I'm sorry, could I just clarify the amendment? I just had some noise in the background here.
So the amendment was that, that the council authorizes from this point forward staff to respond to city. Any city supporter operational amendments to the fresco program at the discussion of the director community services. That they be responsible for communicating with the B I A with regard to that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything further? All right, all those in favor of the amendment? That's carried. All those in favor of the original motion as amended? And that's carried. Heather, thank you very much for your report.
Item eight is business for previous notice has been given and there's none scheduled. So moving to item nine, report of the standing committees. Item nine point one is the report of the planning and heritage committee. And there are two items listed for consideration. Item nine point one point one, planning report zone change amendment application Z twelve dash twenty one for seven and nine Colberg Street. And item nine point one point two, five year review of the city of Stratford official plan, draft work plan and public consultation framework.
Moved by councillor Ritzma, second by councillor Ingram. Discussion councillor seven.
Sorry, I do have after this motion, I just did have a comment about. Seven point six, if I could just comment after this motion.
Okay. All right. We'll go back, we're on nine point one right now. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried. I'll recognize councillor seven back on item seven point six.
Thank you. And, and it's not, I don't think there would be a change, but I did want to comment that with item number seven. I'd see the positives of the program. I just have a concern that, that the tables in the park system and mainly on Tom Patterson Island. Is adding sort of quite a commercializing the atmosphere there. And I feel okay maintaining existing tables for this season. I do have concerns with adding the additional tables, especially with the non forest surfaces. So. I did want to note my, my opposition to adding more tables in the park system.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back then to nine point two and I'll turn it back to the clerk.
Through your worship, item nine point two is the report of the social services committee and there are two items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point two point one, information on Canada wide early learning and childcare funding agreement. And item nine point two point two, definition of attainable housing.
Moved by councillor Henderson, seconded by councillor Ingram, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried.
Item ten is notice of intent and item ten point one is notice of public meeting under the planning act. Stratford City Council will hold a public meeting on Monday, May sixteenth at six P M to hear from interested persons with respect to the following planning applications. Zone change application Z zero two dash twenty two for three eighty five West Core Street. And zone change application Z zero three dash twenty two for four two five three Perth Line thirty six.
That's just an F Y I. So thank you very much.
Item eleven is reading of the bylaws and there are four bylaws listed being eleven point one and then zoning bylaw ten dash twenty twenty two. Three zone lands known seamlessly as seven and nine Colberg Street. Eleven point two to exempt parts one to seventeen, plan forty four R dash five nine seven eight on Bradshaw Drive from part lot control. Item eleven point three to accept the proposal for consulting services for the sanitary master plan. And item eleven point four to amend the appointments by law to make an appointment to the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation Board of Directors. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Move that they be taken unanimously councillor Ingram and second by councillor seven. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried. So we'll go to first and second reading councillor Henderson will move. And seconded by councillor BD for bylaws eleven, one through four to be read a first and second time. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried. Third and final reading moved by councillor Clifford and councillor Bunting. Bylaws eleven, one through four be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed to any? That's carried. Thank you.
Item twelve is the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Seeing none.
Item thirteen is new business. Are there any new business items?
Yeah, I do have one and it will be to elect a chair for infrastructure transportation and safety. As our chair and vice chair are not here this evening. So what is council's wish for someone to chair that portion? Councillor Gaffney.
I'll move councillor Ingram. Uh, should take that position for tonight.
Okay, second or councillor Ritzma, thank you. Anything else? All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you. Anything else under new business councillor seven?
Thank you. I guess I just noticed in, in the news today that Toronto is lifting their state of emergency. I was just wondering. If staff could provide an update around that. And then I just wanted to. Also comment that I was wondering if it would be appropriate for. For us to have in place sort of parameters where we would move out of a state of emergency or. If there, if those are already in place or not, or maybe just for, for public information, if we could provide an update on that.
The emergency control group of the city of Stratford meets this Thursday for a regularly scheduled meeting. It's determined that, that the corporate leadership team makes a recommendation along with then to the emergency control group. And that is the process that's outlined in our bylaw. That group then makes a recommendation to the mayor, which is under the council procedural bylaw. Who declares a state of emergency and lists a state of emergency and it's our intent to have that discussion this Thursday.
Thank you.
Anything further? If not a motion to recess to reconvening committee. Thank you councillor Ingram and councillor BD, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. We'll go to our first committee meeting, which is planning and heritage.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And regrets are provided by councillor Vasilakos. Item number two, are there any disclosures of community interests or the general nature thereof? Item three, the subcommittee minutes are attached from April the twenty eighth. Item four, delegations, item four point one. Presentation by Stratford General Hospital Foundation. And there is a motion that the delegation of Andrea Page on behalf of general. Stratford General Hospital Foundation be heard. Councillor Bunting will move, second by councillor Henderson. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And I'll look to the clerk to bring this page into the meeting.
Through the chair, we are working to connect Andrea now.
Thank you so much.
Andrea, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Good.
Sorry, technology, you'd think I'd be used to it by now.
Welcome, welcome Andrea. The floor is yours and we can see your presentation.
Wonderful. Well, thank you councillors and your worship for your time. I'm here to respectfully request your consideration of a signed bylaw exemption. For two signs celebrating our campaign and campaign launch. If we could just go to the next slide, please. So basically what we're looking at. Proposing is as part of our campaign launch, which is scheduled for June the eighth and will be an outside launch because of COVID. Is to erect some signage. The signage is in front of you. Now I do need to mention that the dimensions on the thermometer sign are incorrect. We did ask the company that has put forth a quote on that signage that it, we would require it to be the same size. As the downtown United Way sign. So the intent was that size, not the size that is actually on the presentation. And I need to apologize for that. In fact, we initially were looking at putting it on the hospital's flagpole, but were advised that. Electricity would be scarce and difficult to find in that position. And that if we could consider putting it on the hospital building itself. So there are two designs, one being focused on the in our hands campaign. And the other being a sign fairly, fairly much equivalent to the United Way sign actually done by the same company. So we're looking at launching the campaign. It's at twenty one million dollars towards the thirty, thirty million dollar goal. But the last nine, as we all know, are going to be the most challenging. So we're looking at a number of things to get the excitement going in our communities. And build that support for our communities. Our actual launch event, we have invited and she has accepted. Doctor Roberta Bondar, who happens to be the first female astronaut, Canadian astronaut in space. To launch our campaign. So it, okay, it sounds a bit hokey. But I think she's going to be an absolutely fantastic speaker. And we're going to be inviting all of our donors and the community to the event. Which will be held outside under several tents and we'll just keep our fingers crossed that it does not rain. So that's what we're looking at right now are two signs. If we could just advance, please. So we are looking at the Cambria side of the hospital. Again, the thermometer is not proposed to be that size. That is just a, a low pier of where we would like to put it. Our previous sign for our heart and soul campaign that we used for our launch. Actually was on our hospital on the same side of the hospital. If we could advance to the next slide, please. So the Cambria side is just gives you an idea of the actual hospital property. So just off of the, of the main front circle. Next slide, please. And so those of you who, some of you might have been at the last launch. It was a while ago. I can tell you, a lot of us looked a lot younger in the photos. But that gives you an idea of the, what the sign would look like. As we're looking at exactly the same dimensions. And it's the same company who did in the previous one for our last launch, who is providing. The expertise to make it happen again if we get the exemption to the sign bylaws. And the next slide, please. So this is a draft of the invite. I would be totally remiss if I did not invite all of your viewers and councillors and your worship. To this event. Where we're going to launch the campaign again with Dr. Roberta Bondar. Outside. And again, we respectfully request the approval of the signage. If not, the event is still going to happen. We do need to launch and build excitement and, and get our community involved. In this worthwhile campaign. As you know, it'll be impacting and building a new chemo, a new pharmacy, a new lab. Technology throughout the hospital, mental health supports and replacing our M R I, which is, which is aging. So impact on everyone in the Stratford community and beyond. And next slide, please. And that's just a thank you for considering this and also a thank you to all the councillors and of course your worship. For all the support you've always given our hospital and our foundation. It's always been greatly appreciated. Thank you so very much.
Thank you Andrea. We appreciate your presentation. And we will move forward then with item five, which is the report of the municipal law enforcement officer. Craig, are you available to give a presentation? Just looking. Oh, I see director Crinklaw.
You to the chair. So I'll just speak just briefly. I think Mr. Page spoke to it, the request fully in that regard. This is a proposal for variance from our sign by law. This request varies from our sign by law in four main ways. It's exceeds the height restrictions. It's larger than what's permitted in the bylaw. It's up for a longer duration. Than what we normally permit. And the request is for two signs when normally we only permit one per property. So that's where it does vary from our bylaw. Knowing that council may consider this proposal, we do provide two recommendations. In the, at the end of the report for your, for your review. Is there any questions?
Any questions for director Crinklaw, councillor, councillor Henderson?
I'm assuming the lights on it will just be like the low glow that's on the United Way when I'm just thinking of. The people that live on Cambria Street, it won't be a bright glowing light, right?
To the chair, my understanding is that will mimic the thermometer that the United Way uses.
Any other questions councillor Gaffney? Councillor Gaffney's not unable to, Mayor Matheson, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we grant the exemption for the conditions listed in the paragraph there.
Thank you. And a second or councillor BD, thank you. Councillor seven. Thank you. So we'll go to councillor seven and then councillor Gaffney.
Great, thank you. So I do support the recommendation. I think my question is maybe to Mr. Crinklaw about the, the wording for that. Foundation removes the sign immediately after fundraising goal has been met. Is that? Is there some sort of reasonable flexibility built into that? I would assume. My question, I guess it wouldn't be, you know, the, the same day they meet the goal or anything, or should we word that differently? I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Through the chair, that's a great recommendation that could be an amendment to the, the recommendation or report if that. Wish council. One comment I might make actually while we're discussing this and hearing Ms. Page here. I would, if we're going this route, I would recommend also many of the amendments to the recommendation to indicate that. That the director of infrastructure and development services is permitted to. Approve the final signage selected by the hospital, just in case the dimensions don't meet what's here in the report.
Councillor Gaffney, I saw your hand and then councillor Henderson.
Yes, my apologies, Mr. Chair. I was having technical difficulties earlier. And through you, this, my question is sort of in relation to what councillor seven asked. This is not an intended. Sign. Like the length of time, like the, the, the one year. Condition you're putting on it, that's one year and the site comes down, not five years when they reach their goal. That's just a clarification.
And through the chair of the, the language that we have there is with the intent that if they exceed the one year requirement, then they could come back to council and make another request at that time. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Henderson?
I would like to make an amendment to that motion that the last, it says. That the hospital removes the sign immediately after fundraising goal has been met period. Because what if it takes them a year and a half, two years, three years, four years, five years? There's no reason they have to keep coming back to council over that. And we all know, what did she say? They have to raise nine million. You know, they might not be able to get that in one year, although Andrew is pretty good at fundraising. So I would just suggest we eliminate the last part of that.
Okay, thank you. I see councillor Ingram's hand.
Thank you. So I, I actually think that that part should be left in and I think. Recognizing that it's the hospital, I understand that they, they may need more time to be able to reach their fundraising goal. But after a year, signs like that can start to deteriorate in terms of their structural integrity or in terms of their appearance and. You know, it may have to come down anyway, just to be redone at the, and then go back up. And so I, I think in, in general, personally, and I think according to the sign by law, we don't permit billboards anywhere. In fact, I think they're prohibited if I'm not mistaken. And, and billboards across the city. You know, when they start to be placed on buildings. It takes away from, from the design and the architecture and the, and the appearance of. It takes away from, from the design and the architecture and the, and the appearance of the building. Once you start to have billboards on buildings. So I actually like that that last piece of the motion is included in there.
So having Counselor Henderson?
I'm kind of surprised by that remark because I know of two billboards we have on Erie Street. One by where Petro Canada was and one at the corner of Monteith. And I don't know if there's any more or not, but I know there's those two that we have billboards and things are up there for quite a long time. And the United Way thermometer, I don't know how many years that's been up there. Do you know, Martin? Has it been up there a long time? But that's just my two cents on it.
So before I go to the mover and second or with regards to Counselor Henderson's amendment, is there a second or for that amendment? Seeing none, then I'm going to come back to the clerk. I, I know that Director Crink, Crinklaw had also suggested a couple adjustments to that. That motion that was made, that was moved in second. Can you give us a little review on that? I'm just gonna.
So through the chair, it's my understanding. That a request has been made from the director to add and that the Director of Infrastructure Development Services or their delegate. Approve the final sign design in order to ensure that any amendments from the dimensions in the report and the final sign are sufficient. And then there was discussion on the timeline for removing of the sign. So if committee would like to provide additional direction, perhaps setting a timeline of forty eight hours or five business days. Or something along those lines for the removal of sign would give further direction on what that flexibility looks like.
Look to the mover, Mayor Matheson, would you like to adjust that? Yes, go ahead.
As the original mover, I'd change that it'd be within thirty days of the completion of the campaign. Okay, time they schedule somebody and have them come in.
Thank you, and Counselor Beatty, I'm looking for you. Thank you. And then through the mover and the, and the second or as well, the, the two pieces just addressed by the clerk. Are you. Fine with those adjustments as proposed by the director? Okay, and Counselor Beatty? Okay, so I'm gonna ask the clerk to read back the final motion.
So through the chair, it's my understanding that the motion is at the request of the Stratford General Hospital for sign by law exemption. In order to erect two community event signs at forty six General Drive be approved. With the condition that the Stratford General Hospital Foundation removes the signs. Within thirty days from the completion of the fundraising goal. And that the signage shall be removed within one year from the issuance of the sign permit. And that the Director of the Infrastructure Development Services or their designate review and approve the final sign design submitted by the Stratford General Hospital Foundation.
Thank you. Mr. Fo, any further questions before I call a question? Counselor Henderson?
This where it says that, let me go back to it. They shall be removed. Could we also add? Or re, or reapplied for a, a new sign permit or something in there? But that sounds so final the way it is. And yet, Mr. Crinkwell said that they can come back and reapply and then it would come back to council.
Mayor Matheson?
Well, everyone has a, a right to apply at any time for an exemption. So it's, it's by putting something in, you're, you're almost guaranteeing them that. It, it's everybody, whether it's a resident, a business owner, the hospital, and at any point in time, anyone can apply for an exemption.
Anything further? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much, both Director Crinklaw and Mr. Fo. Moving on to item number six, reported the manager of planning. Item six point one, accessible housing community improvement program. And there is a motion. I'm, I'm looking to, I mean, Mayor Matheson will move, Counselor Henderson will second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question, all in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you very much. Item seven point one is the department update. And seven point two is advisory committee and outside board minutes. And then item number eight is a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Clifford, second by Counselor Bunting, all in favor? And we're adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, so I will call to order the infrastructure and transportation safety committee. It's been a while since I've chaired a committee, so be fair with me. As noted, Counselor Vassalakos and Counselor Burbach have provided regrets for this meeting. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item number three is the subcommittee minutes from April twenty seventh. We have no delegation scheduled, so we'll move right to item number five, which is the report of the manager of Public Works. And item five point one is the Canada Day Parade Route and Road closures. And Mr. Ryan, do we have Mr. Ryan with us? Mr. Ryan, would you like to say anything?
Yes, through the chair. So over time, the requirements for road closures and specifically MTL roadways have become more stringent. Closing the roadways requires excessive amounts of, of staff time to prepare, manage and remove all the necessary signs. Detours and barricades. So health and safety concerns are at the forefront of this report. It's the city's responsibility to ensure that all members of the public, volunteers and employees have a safe environment to view and manage these parades. Unfortunately, we've, we've had some health and safety concerns grow over the past several years. Road closures on these four lane highways create significant inconvenience for vehicles. And reports from staff of vehicles driving around barriers, getting out to physically remove the barricades. And even vehicles driving on sidewalks and boulevards to get around road closures have, have been reported to us. You know, and we, we do understand that these events are, are extremely important to our community. So it's our goal to, to continue to assist in any way that we can and ensure that they're conducted in a safe and successful manner. So the, the following report just outlines the, the steps that would need to be taken and the costs that would, that could incur in order to, to manage safely.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor Gaffey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just. This seems to be. Like I, I was at all the subcommittee meetings and this wasn't brought up at any of them. I'm a little put out that we're now being asked to. Make a decision. Like basically changing fundamentally, beginning and end of the parade and where. If there's going to be fireworks, where they're going to be and. So I, I, I just want to make, make that understood that this is sort of taking us by surprise. And we need to make the decision on this tonight or can we? Take two weeks to do some consulting, better understanding. So we can make a more informed decision. Thank you.
Director Crinklaw?
Yeah, to the chair. That's the reason why we brought the report in today is I've been working with the Kinsmen to find alternative solutions where we can. Their preference is still strongly to use here on street in the future and connecting links roads going forward. So since we couldn't, we're, we're looking to confirm what's approached the, the city wants to, to do moving forward. While still providing some time for the Kinsmen to prepare for their parade. So we're in committee and council tonight, just so you get another chance to discuss it further in council next week or in two weeks' time. So that's the intent for being in committee and council.
Counselor Henderson?
When is the Huron Street construction scheduled to start? Do we know yet?
Yeah, through the chair. Many people may notice the, the signs are already up around the connecting like roads. It's a bit of a soft start to get people understanding and aware that this is going to happen soon. I anticipate in the next couple of weeks, we'll start seeing some action on those streets.
So I think I read in the report that this year that parade's gonna have to be rerouted no matter what, right? Because it will be already started on the Huron Street construction for the July first parade.
Through the chair, we anticipate, oh, the, the parade cannot happen on Huron Street this year. It will be completely dug up for a large section of it, so.
So I, I'm thinking like. Like I'm wondering, like, we see what happens this year, how they change the route of the parade and see how it goes. And then. You know, we'll have a better feedback from people on how it went. Because as long as there's, you know, wide enough streets that they can stand on each side of the road. And maybe the two lane streets are a lot better. But I have concerns about, and I think I've read that in the report, but the one that usually, the Santa Claus parade. Like it comes up, well, sometimes it comes along the River Drive in a Waterloo and other times it comes up Moran's Drive. And then it comes along Ontario Street to City Hall. So would that section of Ontario Street still be allowed? Because at some point, if they're coming to City Hall. Well, the other one that comes from the, the high school really just crosses Erie Street. But that's the only other one I really can think of that, you know, comes up Ontario Street. I don't know how else they'd get when they land up along the river to start the parade. I don't know how else they'd get the city.
Counselor Henderson, you did just mute yourself, but I, I saw you continuing to talk. Was there something else that you wanted to add at the end?
I don't know when I muted. So did you miss the whole thing?
No.
No, no, I think it was maybe just the last sentence or two.
I don't know how that happened anyway, okay, sorry about that. Just thinking about the Santa Claus parade, did I mention that?
Yeah.
How we have to come up on Terrell Street. And that we have to keep that in mind because I don't know how else they'd get the city hall. Well, I guess unless they came up Waterloo and then turn right down Brunswick or something, but. You know, anyway, those are things we can look at for sure. Because it's important to keep the workers safe and the people in the parade safe. You know, like we don't want anybody driving around these barricades and going up on sidewalk. That's just. Did I say, not great?
Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, is it also including even like, like, like crossing the street also? I understand you don't want the parade on the street, but is the proposal here that it can't even cross like on any of these streets? Is that correct?
Through the chairs, so crossing, again, one of these, one of these roadways, an MTL roadway. For a parade the size of the Canada Day or parade of lights would still require the same amount of, of setup and detour. I believe it's, it's in the report that we currently cross Ontario Street with the, with the Remembrance Day Parade. That's a much, much shorter parade and we're able to do that with police escort through that intersection. So that's why it's, it's a lot easier for that.
Counselor Seven?
Thank you. So I just want to. I guess comment, Counselor Gaffey mentioned that this has sort of come up relatively quickly and that's, I understand why. But I think, I think for the residents of Stratford, this will also be. Quite a surprise that this is being considered. You know, I, I'm among probably many who feel strongly about. The routes that have been going on, you know, as they have been for, for many years. And so I, I would put forward a motion that we approve the request of the Kinsmen to go on Ontario Street for twenty twenty two due to the construction. And that we go with option three to maintain the Huron Street. After twenty twenty two. And that we also have no restrictions for all of the parades from in on local streets. I think that if, if there are parades that want to. You know, have the equal opportunity to, to go on the connecting links. I think they should have that if new parades come along or our groups organize and mobilize, put their resources together. I think, I think we should maintain that. And so. If that motion is clear enough, I'll put that on, on the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Seven, is there a second or for that motion? Pass that a second time, is there a second or? Seeing none. That motion will fail. Is there anyone else willing to put forward a motion? Counselor Clifford?
I will put on the floor the staff recommendation.
Thank you. And do I have a second or for the staff recommendation? Mayor Matheson? Any other comments? Oh, Counselor Henderson?
Well, I can go along with it for this year, but I think once the Kinsmen have the parade on the local streets. I would appreciate hearing feedback about that for future years because if it works, well, then we can continue with it. If not, we might have to come back and revisit this.
So Counselor Henderson, is that a friendly amendment to? The staff recommendation?
No, because we can always bring it back if we find there's a lot of complaints and issues with whatever route they choose. Right?
Okay. Counselor Seven, I saw your hand.
Thank you. I guess first, I, I would be interested in having a friendly amendment to have this come back to council. Maybe next year, early in the year, whatever would be appropriate to, for planning for community groups to see sort of a review of how it worked on local streets. I would put that amendment forward.
Counselor Clifford, would you accept that friendly amendment?
Okay.
And Mayor Matheson as a second or? Yeah, okay. Okay, if there's no further comments or questions, we do have the staff recommendation on the floor with an addition. To have this request come back to council early next year. Yes, Counselor Henderson?
Well, what about the Santa Claus parade then? We should be reviewing it before the Santa Claus parade happens because they come up Ontario Street. And somehow coming from the arena, they have to cross Ontario, you know, whether it's that. You know, Moran and Nile or whether it's Waterloo Street, there's some way they have to cross Ontario Street to get. I guess if they come up Waterloo, then it's really just one block of Ontario Street. And there's, you know, there's ways to reroute people then. So we have to do something about the Santa Claus parade because that'll be coming up. We've already dealt with the Remembrance, but that's not, that's, that's not till next year. Or that's in November, right? So.
So Counselor Henderson, why, why don't we? Leave the. Santa Claus parade, set that aside for the moment. And we've got Canada Day and the Remembrance Day parades figured out. Maybe we could leave the Santa Claus parade with staff to coordinate. Because I think there's, there's a few things to figure out with the Santa Claus parade. We either have to cross Ontario or we have to cross Erie. Depending on where they congregate and where they're leaving from. So perhaps we can leave the Santa Claus parade and refer that one back to staff to sort out some sort of route.
Well, the Erie Street one is usually the Canada Day parade and the Ontario Street is the Santa Claus parade.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking of properties where they could actually gather all of the floats and start to line up. And there's, there's very few properties in between. Well, it, as I say, it would be better if staff could just consult with that and, and sort out a route that would make sense.
So do we need to add the? The Santa Claus parade into the motion at some place?
Would you like to make a friendly amendment to do that?
Pardon?
Would you like to make a friendly amendment to do that?
I would, because how else are we going to deal with it if we're not having a report back to next year?
Okay, I see our state clerk's hand up, Mr. Fo.
Through the chair, I'm wondering if we can deal with the current motion on the floor. And then perhaps if there's a referral motion to staff regarding the Santa parade, then that can be a separate motion that we can send. As I do believe it's community service staff who oversee that function in the city, although I. that function in the city, although I could be wrong.
Okay. And Counselor Seven, I see you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify, I guess, for Counsel Henderson and for the public that this motion will no longer allow any future parades to be on Ontario Street, Huron Street or Erie Street. And so for that reason, that is why I feel strongly to oppose this and maybe that adds some clarity that this motion would not allow any future parades on those streets, including the Santa Claus parade, so.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. So if we could, let's vote on the motion that is on the floor, which is the staff recommendation along with the addition that this be brought back to council early next year for review. And we've had a mover and a seconders. So, oh, Mayor Matheson?
I just want to correct Counselor Seven. So what it is, it's saying for the rest of this year, they're not being permitted. And early 2023, it'll be reviewed. So I just want to be clear that it isn't prohibited now and in forever. So just don't want to paint a picture for people. It's just for the balance of the year.
Correct. And that's the addition that we have added into the staff recommendation. So all in favor of that motion? And opposed? And I see two opposed, so that is carried. Counselor Henderson, did you want to make a further motion on this item?
Yes, I'd like to refer to staff to come back with our recommendation about the Santa Claus parade on Ontario Street.
Thank you. And do I have a seconder for that motion? Counselor Ritzma? Seeing no other hands up, all in favor? And opposed? None opposed, so that is carried. Thank you very much. Moving along, we will move to item number six, which is the report of the manager of environmental services. And item 6.1 is 2021 Stratford Water Pollution Control Plant Annual Report. And Mr. Bose, are you with us? I see our director. Director Crinklaw, do you have anything that you would like to say regarding this report?
Yeah, so the chair will skip a brief. Effectively, this is a requirement, a legislative requirement by the ministry. And I guess, sorry, the, the report outlines some of the the operations of the plant. It's, it's an annual requirement that is due and it's provided for council just for clarity and transparency.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from committee? Counselor Ritzma?
I'll move the recommendation.
Lovely. And do I have a seconder? Counselor Bunting? All in favor? Thank you, and that's unanimous. Item seven is the report of the event coordinator and item 7.1 is a request for an exemption to noise. Oh, we have three items, actually. We'll start with item one. Item 7.1 is request for an exemption to noise control by law 113-79 for the Stratford Festival's Tom Patterson Theater opening night. I see Miss Denny. Does any member of committee have any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a mover for that motion? Counselor Clifford and Counselor Seven seconding. All in favor? Thank you, and that's unanimous. Item 7.2 is a request for an exemption to noise control by law 113-79 for the Doc Music Concert Series. And do I have a mover for that staff recommendation? Counselor Bunting and Counselor Ritzma seconding. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you, and that's unanimous. Item 7.3 is also a request to noise control by law 113-79 for the World in a Weekend Event. Do I have a mover? Counselor Gaffney and a seconder? Counselor Henderson, all in favor? Thank you, and that is also unanimous. Thank you, Miss Denny. Item eight is the report of the project manager. Item 8.1 is bicycle lanes on Fraser Drive and Foreman Ave. Do I have any member of staff to speak on this item? Director Crinklaw?
Yeah. Yeah, so through the chair. Council made a resolution last year or the year before that staff look into the traffic concerns raised shortly after the bike lanes were installed. Just as an FYI, the bike lanes were approved through council in 2011 as part of the subdivision process. In the 2014 Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, it shows the bike lanes existing for this section of street. When they were installed, there were kind of four main general areas of concern brought up by the public at the time, that being the loss of parking, speeding, cyclist safety and the construction vehicles on the street. The report outlines a bit of response to our investigation into these concerns in terms of traffic data. The report shows that they're within acceptable speeds that we anticipate for such a street with the 85th percentile being 47 kilometers per hour. Noting that the concerns were there, we, we did erect a bit of an information piece for drivers in the area by putting out portable radar signs. And shortly after we put out those signs, we followed with the police to do some enforcement in the area to kind of complete that education of concerns for that area. In terms of cycling safety, this, the bike lanes proposed here or that are existing here are in adherence to the Ontario Traffic Manual for that type of road. After reviewing this, this section of road, we thought it might be prudent to add it in the second line, bit of a buffer zone for cyclists and traffic. The idea being that if you narrow the lanes, that it will help calm traffic speeds as well, a bit of a buffer for cyclists in that area. In terms of on-street parking, the design used for the road meets our, our engineering standards. There isn't enough space to relocate elsewhere to have onsite parking and cycling traffic for the street. And there is, all the neighboring streets do have parking permitted if need be for those residents impacted. And then we have implemented some truck by law restrictions for this area, and we do request time to time that police do provide some enforcement. That sums up the report. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Director. Any questions, Mayor Matheson?
Mr. Crinklaw, we had a letter written to us by and signed by a number of residents on Foreman Ave. And their solution was to propose that if it was north-south traffic, or sorry, traffic heading north, that it come across Foreman and then down, I guess it's Fraser, and for traffic heading south, that it go all the way through to Cullaton and then maybe come back through the subdivision another way. That way, every street had at least an opportunity of parking on one side. Was that reviewed by staff and what was your concern with, with proceeding with that recommendation?
Through the chair, I had to follow with the project manager to see if he include that in his investigation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of committee? Seeing none, do I have someone to move the staff recommendation or any other recommendation? Mayor Matheson?
Could I make deferral motions that we can check with the project manager to see if, that that solution was investigated? It'd be good to be able to give the residents an answer to their letter. I did have some call my office prior to today's meeting.
Thank you. So we have a deferral motion. And Counselor Ritzma, I saw your hand. First, you're seconding?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, I will call the question. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item nine is for the information of committee and I will ask for a motion for adjournment, please. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Beatty, all in favor? Thank you, and that's carried.
I'll call this meeting of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee to order. Item two, discourse of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none. There's some, there's the subcommittee meetings are, minutes are attached. Item four, delegations unscheduled. Item five, report of the project manager, 5.1 Waterloo Street Repair Update. I get a mover for that, Counselor Clifford. Seconded by Counselor Ritzma. Does anyone have any questions? Or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Item six, report of the director of corporate services, 6.1 corporate, corporate-wide cell phones and plants. Do I have a mover? For the recommendation? Counselor Henderson and Counselor Ingram. Does anyone have any questions for the director? Concerned, seeing none. I'll call the question unless Carmen had any comments on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I didn't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, defending, that's carried. Item 6.2, Police Capital and Reserve Fund Update. Moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Bunting. Does anyone have any questions for the director? Seeing none. He, you didn't have anything to add, Carmen?
Through the chair, no, not really. Just, this one's just a little bit of housekeeping. It's not, not significant.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Most defending, and that's carried. Item seven is for information to committee and it's some attached advisory committee minutes. Item eight, adjournment. Moved by Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Ingram. All those in favor? That carries. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Gaffney. I'll reconvene council this time and I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item 15.1 is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none.
Item 15.2 is reading of the bylaws, and there is one final bylaw listed for consideration, and that's the confirmatory bylaw. It requires first and second, and then third and final reading.
Mover for the confirmatory bylaw, Counselor Henderson and Counselor Beatty, that it be read a first and second time. All those in favor? Opposed, any? It's carried. Third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney, Counselor Ingram, the confirmatory bylaw 11.5, be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. A motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings. Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Clifford, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.